Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Tuesday, November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, the regular town council meeting. Please rise for a moment of silence. At the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Harmanity?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Tata?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Zandry?
Here.
Servoni?
Here. Counselor Allenson did advise me that she would be running late. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Mr. Chairman, a movie approver accept to consent agenda items A through H.
Moved seconded by Counselor Marone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Item five, the public question and answer period. Sir, name an address for the record, please.
Anthony Caballero. I live at twenty-nine Stony Brook Road. They're members of the Wallingford Town Council and Mayor Dickinson. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before the town council. I have been a resident of Wallingford since nineteen eighty-five. Currently reside at twenty-nine Stony Brook Road. I'm here tonight to share my growing concern regarding the increasing incidents of motor vehicle thefts and break-ins in our neighborhood, particularly during the overnight hours. Over the past month, there has been a noticeable rise in criminal activity affecting the safety and security of our community. Many of the neighbors on Stony Brook Road and Williams Road have experienced the unfortunate situation of having our vehicles stolen or broken into, leading to both financial losses and emotional distress. As residents who take pride in their community, it is disheartening to witness these incidents and feel such a sense of vulnerability in our own community. I understand that law enforcement faces various challenges, but I believe that additional police presence during the overnight hours on Stony Brook Road or an unmarked vehicle on Amy Lane could significantly contribute to deterring these criminal activities. A stronger police presence would not only serve as a deterrent, but also provide a sense of security for residents who currently feel exposed to potential threats. I kindly request that the town council consider allocating additional resources to enhance police patrols in our neighborhood, especially during the hours of two-thirty AM to four PM, uh, four AM, when these incidents tend to occur. I believe that it's a proactive approach to law enforcement can help address the root causes of these issues and create a safer environment for all of our residents. I'm hopeful that together we can work towards implementing measures that will enhance the safety and security of Stony Brook Road. I am open to any further discussions or collaboration needed to address this matter effectively. And lastly, I would like to address the Mayor Dickinson. As a longtime resident of Wallingford, I would like to express my deepest gratitude for your exceptional dedication, unwavering commitment to public service over the past forty years. Your leadership and tireless efforts have played a pivotal role in shaping our community into a vibrant and thriving place it is today. Through your twenty years as mayor, you have demonstrated a profound commitment to the well-being of our residents and the prosperity of our town. I hope that you enjoy a long, healthy, and well-deserved retirement, and thank you all for your attention to this pressing issue.
Thank you. I'll, uh, let the police chief know about your comments. Anyone else? Seeing none, I close the public question and answer period and, uh, Mr. Hut, you're on to consider or approve agreement of the Teamsters Local Four Forty-three contract tentative agreement effective July one twenty-two to June thirty twenty-four. Just identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Jim Hut, town HR director.
So we have an agreement. If you could give us the important points.
Sure. I'm here tonight to seek your approval of a two-year contract with Teamsters Local Four Forty-three. This bargain unit represents the clerical employees, public works, sewer, the engineering employees in the town of Wallingford. The contract calls for a general wage increase of, uh, the first year retro to July one twenty-two of two and a half percent, effective July one twenty-three, two and a quarter percent. It also provides for additional monies for clothing, uh, safety shoes, um, a twenty-dollar payment for employees in the dispatch center who train new employees. Um, and effective March first, two thousand and twenty-four, employees' premium cost share for health insurance will increase to sixteen percent. Also, uh, includes increased meals from nine fifty to ten fifty per meal. And also clarifies layoff and recall language for the bargaining unit. If there's no, so I'll take questions if there are any.
Sure. Questions from the council, Counselor Fishbine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Hut. Um. This is a tough one, huh? I see unusual language, um, that I haven't, I haven't seen before, but, um, on page five, we're talking about seniority.
Yes.
Certainly, it's important that our department heads know about seniority. And just, this, um, collective bargaining agreement is for more than one office area. Is that fair? It's like, sort of like a catch-all.
That's correct. Right. There's four seniority units within the bargain.
Okay. And in my experience, seniority, um, is a component of one of two things, um, tenure or rank within the union. And this contract used to be set up that seniority had to do with rank within the union, and that's being removed. You concur.
So the language that's being changed is to focus on seniority within a classification.
Okay.
I understand the point that you're making. I've heard this before, that the, uh, language pretty much made seniority, regardless of classification, to be supreme. And being in a, uh, this profession for over thirty years and have been through layoffs, and I'm not suggesting that there's going to be one, but when I looked at the language, I found that it was a little complicated in terms of if there were layoffs, how would that be, uh, how would that be carried out? And they can be very complicated. Uh, so that's why this, so this was proposed the last time, um, and I wanted to propose it again in the union to agree with it.
Well, and when I read it, it seems to be more confusing. Let me just explain. The old language had president, vice president, treasurer, secretary. That was the hierarchy. That was the seniority list, right? Now we've gotten rid of that. And we're saying that stewards are taking that place.
So let me explain that.
Sure.
The way the Teamsters are set up, they do not have a president, vice president, secretary. They're all referred to as stewards. So this was their language that they proposed, and we're just taking those, you know, those offices out, and the stewards are, you know, the top of their seniority list. But they're now the leaders of the group.
Understood. But the prior language had the language. It had president, secretary, treasurer, all that stuff. So you're telling me that the union agreed to language that they just violated? I mean, if they didn't institute it, it's existing language, right? And you've removed the existing language from the prior contract?
That's correct.
Okay. So there was a provision in the prior contract that required, they agreed upon, to have that hierarchy. They didn't, they never instituted that hierarchy, right? That's what you're telling us?
No, they had that hierarchy. So this, so this contract, um, until this, you know, tentative, uh, of the agreement gets either ratified or gets approved, um, we were working under the old NIPSU contract. Now the Teamsters are the bargaining unit that represents these employees. And their structure does not provide for a local president, vice president. They just refer to them as stewards. And there is a, a set of stewards who, um, for each of the seniority units who, who are in effect the lead, you know, they fulfill that role of, of the leadership role for the local.
And how many stewards are in each of the departments, so to speak?
I think there's four.
Okay.
Four or five. I'll have to double check that.
So what is the hierarchy when you have four stewards in an office area? Before, or under the, the prior language, if one of those individuals happened to be the president, they would rise to the top. If they were the vice president, they would be in the second spot. So how do you deal with now you have four individuals in, in an office area doing work, and they are equal, and we're dealing with seniority? So can you unpack that?
So I'm not sure that that's what they would have. Like I said, each seniority unit has their own, um, steward for that group.
Okay. It, it certainly seems more confusing, but to me. Um, on page ten, it talks about shift swaps. And I think this is dispatchers? Yeah, police dispatch.
Yes.
Right? So when we look at section five, subsection A, it says all shift swaps are for full shifts. Comma. That's a statement, right? So all shift swaps are for full shifts, right? Then the next clause says, and may be a partial shift in increments of one hour. So when I read that, it appears the two clauses are in conflict. Can you unpack that?
See, I don't see that as a conflict.
Okay.
So all shifts, so this was, this language was reviewed by the police chief. Um, he agreed with it. Um, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. You have an eight-hour shift, and if you wanted to take a swap, uh, you may do it for, um, one hour with the approval of the chief. If he doesn't feel that's appropriate, he doesn't want it, he'll say no. But I think it does provide, so it declares that all, all swi, so it states that all shift swaps are for a full shift. But you could have a shift swap of less than one hour with the approval of the police chief.
Actually, it doesn't say you can do it for less than one hour. It says in increments of one hour. That would not be less than one hour, right?
In increments of one hour.
Okay.
So we did vet this language with the police chief.
I, I understand, but the police chief is the police chief. And, you know, the test there is whether or not it's workable. But when I go before the Board of Labor Relations and we're dealing with contracts, not the police chief, it's legal interpretation. So let's go to paragraph, or page thirteen. The last paragraph, uh, which is all new language, but it seems to be somewhat short. Says the town will permit an employee to leave work. So it's not defined, but I assume that that means, because this is under the sewer division, that the sewer division will permit an employee to leave work, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Or absent himself? Absent himself, what?
So, so this is comparable language that we already have in the water contract. And what that provides for is if you have an emergency call out between the hours specified, the employee can remain out of work, I'm assuming for safety reasons, uh, for the amount of time for the emergency call out.
So that the term absent himself, which I've never seen, fifty-eight years of being on this planet, um, absent himself means, or being absent, or says to leave work or absent himself. That, that, that means be absent. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And what is in the, the last line of that section? What is pay for rest time? What is, what does that mean? Very last line.
They'll be considered rest time, and they'll be paid while they're resting.
Okay.
I think it's a safety issue. You get called out in the middle of the night. You're out doing, when they do get called out, it's pretty intensive work that they're doing. And this is to provide them the opportunity to absent themselves from work so we can maintain a safe workplace.
Okay. I'm just trying to put all this language together. The town will permit an employee to leave work or absent himself, the normal shift after emergency call out between midnight and the regular schedules without loss of pay for rest time. Shall not exceed the number of hours worked between midnight and the regular scheduled start time. What does that, I understand the safety issue, but it appears to be a, an algebraic equation. Can you just explain how this would work? How this applies?
You have an emergency call. It comes in at one o'clock. You're, you're out until five AM. You have four hours. Your normal scheduled time is seven AM. You show up at eleven.
Okay. And it's, and this provision is to prevent a disciplinary action, is that? Because you're not, you're getting paid, right? I guess. Is it rest time or not?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm, I'm working with the word permit. So government is going to permit an action by an employee. And usually when government doesn't permit, you end up with grievance or some sort of dispute. So is this supposed to permit an action such as being absent during that period of time without, uh, adverse action by the employer? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. Right. That, I kept on reading it, and I was like, the, um, on page fifteen, the end of article five. Now just, when the director of public works or is designated directs that all public works employees report for winter storm duty, employees who work until they are dismissed by the director or designated shall receive twenty-five dollars. So I'm trying to figure out, because it, it doesn't, you know, when I got halfway through the paragraph, I was like, okay, if somebody has to work overtime, you know, they're there for nine hours, you get a bonus, right? Something like that. But I didn't see some sort of requirement. So it appears that the scenario is going through my head. If somebody gets called in, they're there for five minutes, Rob Baltimore says, you're dismissed, they get twenty-five dollars. Is that how this works?
No. So this was a proposal by the union, um, and I had this, uh, vetted very carefully with Dennis Chicorello. And, um, what happens, so how this will work is when the director of public works, and they'll know when a major storm is coming. And they tell the people, you need to report, you know, ten o'clock. Um, they, they come to work. Right now, they don't receive any compensation. This is a way to, I think, you know, take care of people who are out all night long, uh, plowing. And it only becomes effective when the director of public works tells everybody, mechanics and all the maintainers, you need to come in, you know, at this time. It's not going to be, um, if something pops up in the middle of the night, if, uh, uh, if an Alberta Clipper, you know, comes in and they only need a couple of people, that's not when it's going to apply. It's only when, when everybody's designated to come in, and they all come in, um, and they work until they're dismissed by the director, they'll receive twenty-five dollars.
So collectively, so you, you have staff that's, was scheduled to work that time, and you have the emergency situation because they're called in because there's going to be the storm, right? It's that, that set of people that are called in for the emergency that collectively, when Rob or his designated says it's no longer emergency, or we've done our duties, you all can leave, then they all get the twenty-five dollars?
It's not going to be an emergency. It's going to be when there's a winter storm.
Yeah, which is
Yeah.
usually
Yes.
It's unanticipated, it's unplanned. We know three or four days in advance.
Now, if someone doesn't show up, if they're out of town, then they're not going to get the twenty-five dollars. It's only those people that show up, who work until the end of the storm, who will receive the twenty-five dollars.
Now, you mentioned something that presently, like without this language, if Rob called in, the crew, they all came in, they clocked in, they wouldn't get paid at all right now?
No. So right now, this is for a major storm that they know is coming. It's not going to be applicable to little things that pop up in the middle of the night. Rob says, you all need to report at this, you know, time. We'll start this, you know, this, uh, payment to become effective. If they work through the storm and then, you know, right up until the point of dismissal, they'll receive twenty-five dollars for that.
Yeah, I just, I was dealing with the present, right? You had said something about how right now they're not getting paid.
They don't re, so, and he makes that declaration to them, they don't get paid, they show up.
They show up. Why don't they get paid presently? If you're on, if you're called in by your boss and?
Well, they're, so, so they're paid once they, once they report in.
Okay.
So this is a, a, um, this is a way to compensate them for, you know, coming to work and, you know, the inconvenience to, uh, to their life.
No, I got that. I just, when you threw out that they don't get paid, you threw me for a second.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, they are all paid for the time that they worked.
That's correct.
This is an additional payment.
Yeah.
But it's not that they come in and they work all winter, uh, all storm, and they can get twenty-five dollars. No, it, it's whatever the pay is overtime, whatever the pay is, and this is an additional payment. I just want to make
That's correct.
clear to anyone listening. This is not the only remuneration.
Yeah. And right now, Rob from time to time calls people in when we're going to have a snow event, right? And those people get paid, if they've already worked, they're forty that week, they're getting overtime, or they're gonna, you know, bank it or something, something else. This is on top of that for those individuals that are called in for an emergency.
That's correct.
Okay. I just, you threw me for a second. You know, the, um, Article Six, the grievance, and this is just my last thing about this. I don't think it's fair that you have a, so basically Article Six, and this is not, it's not necessarily a management thing, but I bring this up all the time, that nobody is really at the table for the worker. Article Six says that all grievances having to deal with disputes in the employment relationship go through the grievance procedure, right? And regular layperson reading this would say, okay, if I got a dispute, anything having to do with my employment, I go through the grievance procedure, right? Which is strict. When you get, and that's on page fifteen. When you get all the way to the back, page forty-five, Article twenty-one, it says certain things in this relationship don't go through the grievance procedure. I don't think that's fair. If you're going to have an, an exception, I think openness and transparency says, except as in Article twenty-one, all grave, all disputes, uh, through employer-employee relationships should go through the grievance procedure. Article twenty-one has to do with the pension plan. Um, and it, and it says that any dispute pertaining to the pension plan may be addressed through provisions of Article eleven of the pension plan and shall not be appealed through the grievance and arbitration procedures of Article Six. I run into this frequently where employees get a copy of the contract. They read half of it. You got fifty pages here. They have a belief based upon a certain representation in here, and then, oh, many, many pages thereafter. There's some exclusion. Exclusion should come first, or there should be a, some sort of cross-reference in the document so that people know what they're dealing with. So I thank you for your work on this. Um,
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So am I correct to think that the members of the bargaining, bargaining unit voted to approve this agreement?
Yes. From what I understand, it was unanimous, but I had not been officially told that.
Thank you. Any other questions in the council? Questions or comments from the public? All right. And, um, is there any reason why you need action on this? This is the kind of thing that will be approved by virtue of time if we take no action tonight? Is that correct?
That's correct. If no action taken by the council become effective December twenty-third.
Thank you. Nothing further from the council? Thank you, Mr. Hut.
Thank you very much.
On to item seven. Get a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move we approve ARPA funding allocation in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for the Coalition for Better Wallingford.
Second?
Moved and seconded, may- Moved and seconded, Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this was discussed at the last meeting, there weren't enough votes in order to pass the matter. Uh, tonight, we have with us, um, individuals who are supporting this. Uh, our, our Health Director, Vanessa Batista. Uh, there's a letter from Mandy Miranda from YSS. There's a letter from Danielle Belizzi, Superintendent of Schools, indicating that they have had, uh, good, good results and appreciate the work done by the Coalition. I think Diane, the Director of the Coalition, is here tonight as well. And this is a request for funding as outlined in a program that I think is in your packet. So we, uh, we still feel that, uh, this is a, a great adjunct, a help to our departments as well as a, a very worthwhile effort in, on behalf of the community to encourage health and safety and, uh, good lifestyle amongst our citizens.
Thank you. Would, would you like any of those people to present before questions from the council or?
Sure, uh, Diane? Do you want to say a few words regarding the program? And Vanessa's here as well.
Good evening.
You could stay on the mic, just so that, uh, the record picks you up.
Good evening. Diane Mark, Executive Director of the Coalition for Better Wallingford. And I am just here to, once again...
You, you need to stay on the mic.
Once again,
Thank you.
Um, ask the council to approve the money that is going to allow us to continue to do what we do. Substance abuse is a real problem. It affects everyone, it does not discriminate. And, um, you know, we fight every single day to try to save a life if we can. So that's the bottom line, that's what we're here for.
Great. I think I saw, Counselor Todd, are you interested in commenting?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, well, I just, this is, first off, this is certainly not an indictment of the Coalition or anything you do. Um, obviously, you do wonderful work in our town, which is evidenced by all the letters we received, um, stating that, and, and we all know, um, what you do. However, um, the process that got us here, um, is not fair, in my opinion. I just wanted to give a recap of, of how we ended up here tonight. So this applicant received seventeen thousand dollars in ARPA funding. And then there's a fifty thousand dollar portion of that that was denied by the ARPA committee. Then the council came up with the standard deviation rule, uh, which basically changed the rules and lowered the threshold for approval, which then brought them into the category of being approved for the fifty thousand dollar, um, grant. Then the application goes to the Law Department and is deemed problematic. I'm not a hundred percent sure why, um, I think the program was maybe unable to, to go forward as presented. So then the applicant is given the opportunity to present a revamped program, which was presented to the council at our last meeting, and it did not pass. Uh, there were two counselors absent. So then we received tonight's agenda and the program is put back on the agenda for another stab at it with more counselors present. Um, nothing has changed, there's no new information, um, but there's several issues at play here. This was clearly a special set of rules carved out for an organization that's deemed to be deserving by the administration. And no other applicant was afforded the opportunity to submit a completely new application after the deadline. So this is wholly unfair to other applicants who were also denied. Um, the item also now appears, or reappears, with letters of support. These letters came from town department heads who were assumedly asked by their boss, the mayor, to write letters in support. And again, no other applicant was afforded this opportunity. As for the council, absenteeism shouldn't be a reason for another stab at a failed vote. I have never once in four years missed a council meeting. But if this is the precedent that we're setting, then why would any counselor feel the need to prioritize meetings if they just get their say when they return and the item can reappear? This is unfair to those of us who showed up and had our say, and undermines the voice of the counselors who are present at every meeting. So therefore, it brings me to this, the precedent setting to put failed items back on agendas. I know there was some back and forth via email amongst the counselors, uh, this, this past week as the procedural ability to do so. I've certainly had my fair share of losses up here, but I respect the council's vote and we move on. But if this is the precedent we're setting, then it brings me to an ARPA vote that we took back in May that has never been acted upon, and I'd like to bring that up again tonight. If we're going to bring ARPA items up multiple times to try to get them funded, then I think we need to look again at the Fire Department and Police Department requests that the mayor cut from the budget this year. The council voted to use ARPA money to fund these items, and the total amount of these items is less than the application that we have in front of us tonight. These are tools that our own departments requested to help them do their jobs and to protect us, and they were cut from the budget. So the council voted to use ARPA money to fund them, but they still remain unfunded. So if items can be put back on agendas multiple times until they are funded, then I am placing this item back on the next council agenda, and I would possibly put it on every council agenda if that's our precedent we're setting now, until that they're funded. I hope these items for our police and fire departments, who certainly suffered through COVIDs, will be funded. And I'm just simply requesting that the administration honor the council's vote and to look out for our own people and employees and departments as much as they look out for nonprofits. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein?
Yeah, I mean, I said a lot at the last meeting about this. I too flagged the procedure, it's unfair. But I, I just have a question. I, I know you already got the seventeen thousand, nine hundred dollars, I think was the first grant application, and, um, you know, I was part of that process approval. And the representation for that application was, we were negatively impacted through the pandemic. We couldn't fundraise, uh, we need that money, uh, to continue the mission that we do. How is that different from what's before us?
So the seventeen thousand, I believe it was six hundred, was used, and mind you, this happened all before I got here. It was used to revamp our office because we had no desks, we had no computers, we had no printers, we had nothing. Um, and that's what that was specified for.
Okay. And then a portion of this, I think it's thirteen thousand dollars, is for Narcan.
Correct.
And I didn't see, and maybe I missed it. Where is that going to end up? Because I know Fire and Police already have Narcan, so where is that going to go?
Narcan is going to be distributed to all of the employers, um, and employees that we train. It's going to be their initial setup for Narcan. They're going to get a box with two doses of Narcan to be able to use at their businesses.
Back in January of two thousand...
Just first, identify yourself for the record, and second, stay on the microphone, please. Thank you.
You can pull that towards you if you...
Hello, everybody, my name is Natalie Malma. I am the Program Director for the Coalition for Better Wallingford, and I have been so since September of two thousand twenty-two. But I have been with the Coalition for Better Wallingford since it began. Um, I had the honor, pleasure, whatever you want to call it, to be certified in Narcan training and teaching, uh, with, along with the Health Department by BHC Care. Um, I was trained and educated to be able to teach our community, or anybody who wants it, on how to identify an opioid overdose. I then created a program with the Coalition for Better Wallingford called the Narcan Initiative. The goal was to educate different, different municipalities other than police and fire in our community about Narcan, to decrease the stigma from Narcan. A lot of people view Narcan, or has a stigma around it, that Narcan is a hall pass for drug use, and that enables people with drug problems to continue to use drugs. And my goal was to erase that stigma by educating how to identify an opioid overdose, share that, um, in seminars with our, with our senior center, different age brackets. I've held many of these opioid overdose, um, teachings at the Coalition for Better Wallingford and have been able to go into a few local businesses that do see this as an issue and do want to be prepared for if anybody in their business presence, whatever, has an overdose. Um, so I created this program in hopes of not only educating youth and families to promote family safety, um, but to take it to a higher level of education in our community. Diane, when she joined the Coalition for Better Wallingford, saw the need for that as well, after we have spent more time getting to know our community partners, like Wallingford Public Schools, reassessing our relationship with the Police Department, and having local merchants that we've encountered at merchants' meetings at WCI, reaching out to us that they want this education, they want this in their businesses. And I do my best to provide anybody I can, who can go through the, the training with me and take on the education, to get Narcan. I, that's like saying that Benadryl is a loophole to keep eating shrimp if you're allergic. If, it just doesn't make any sense to me to not know how to use this life-saving medication.
Well, I think culturally, you know, when, when I was a youngster, the message was, "Don't do drugs or you will die", right? Or your brain will get fried, right? We had the commercials with the egg and all that stuff, you know? And I, you know, part of the messaging today is, you don't, you don't have that fear with certain things because, you know, if you do it and if you are in that situation, this drug is there. I mean, I think that's the dynamic that we're dealing with, and, and it, it has been a problem. But I, I'm looking at this, this fifty thousand dollar expenditure was not even on the horizon. Where are we? Less than a year ago, right? It was a totally different, this money was not going for Narcan. It was going for something totally different, right? So this need has presented itself after the town and you folks?
We didn't have Diane, we didn't have the structure that we have now at this time last year. I give all the, the thanks and, and love for Ken and Jen in the world for starting the Coalition, but they were not involved on a daily basis like Diane and myself are. I was the only one at the Coalition for Better Wallingford for a better part of a year, trying to rebuild which with what once was one of the greatest organizations in the community because of how badly they suffered during the pandemic. There was no, nothing left for them to give, there was nothing left in the Coalition that even functioned. There was nobody left with any passion to do the research, to do the work, to bring these issues back into light. I had to fight to bring Diane to the Coalition, I had to fight to keep the Coalition open, and I fought with the writing of the ARPA grant that I originally wrote, of what the present and what was left behind of what the Coalition once was, and what I was left with versus what I was intaking as to be the issues in our community right now. I agree, very different things. Which is why now that we do have, we have this beautiful functioning office that allows us to do the work that we can do, and that's due to ARPA. I would not be able to have the, the time and resources allotted to me to do the work in town that I am lucky enough to do. If Diane wasn't brought on as an executive director and that we weren't, you know, fighting for this tooth and nail. If she was not brought on, I don't know how much longer I would have been able to, I don't want to say float the Coalition, but to do with the Coalition with what I was left with and be taken seriously as a twenty-six-year-old girl in the community. It just wasn't happening for us.
I understand, but what we're dealing with here is the ARPA process.
Yes.
Certainly, if the Coalition, and the Coalition has go to the mayor's office, you know, January usually, letters come into the mayor's office, "We'd like money in the budget, this is what we're going to do with it", and that becomes part of the budget process, right? What we're dealing with is something totally different. And, you know, what I was, we were discussing is where we were seven months ago when the application was put in, and this program wasn't even on the horizon. And then a process happens, and Diane and, you know, you folks get together and say, "Well, we really can't do what that other grant was for", together with the Law Department, and, you know, there's, there's a regroup, right? That's where we are. But part of the problem is, is that other entities have asked us for putting in a, a new application. And we've said, "No, to be fair to everyone, we have to be fair to everyone." And that, that's part of what we're wrestling with. But I just want to come back to the Narcan. So for thirteen thousand dollars, how many Narcan, Narcan kits can you purchase?
Narcan by itself retails for, I'm dyslexic, so you got to bear with me. It's ninety-one dollars a carton. And that was a budget narrative that we researched with the Health Department in order to acquire a little bit of Narcan when Wallingford Public Schools asked us for it. So, help me with the math, because I one hundred percent cannot do it in my head, but thirteen thousand divided by ninety-one, anyone got a calculator? It's, it would be significant to our community to have this much Narcan to protect our residents and youth.
Okay, so it's about sixteen hundred units, right? So now you have sixteen hundred units of Narcan. What are you doing with this? So, I mean...
If it's unused, um, Narcan is, is, has a shelf life of up to four years. Now, if you decide to use Narcan that has passed its expiration date, just like you would be drinking milk, you know, you're taking a chance. But the way that I prefer to look at as, the number was what, sixteen?
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred? That is sixteen hundred chances at saving a life. And there's two doses per carton, so you're getting two doses of four milligrams of Narcan. So it's two times two opportunities for somebody to not lose their person.
Understood, that is your perspective. However, I don't see a portion of the, are we going to be telling residents of Wallingford, "Do not call the police"?
No. Oh, no, 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 it's part of the actual education is, "Call nine-one-one".
So the first line of defense to an overdose is not the Coalition?
No.
It is Fire and Police, right?
One hundred.
So when you have sixteen hundred units of Narcan, those arguably are not going to be used until Fire or Police don't have them, right?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't understand that question.
No, so, I know what you're saying. I do know, I, in the event that the, they had nothing, yes, we would gladly give our stash of Narcan.
But the issue is time.
Yes, the issue is time.
You're not going to wait for a car to show up if you have the Narcan in your hand.
That's correct.
And I, the other thing I'm going to say is, no addict is out there taking drugs more recklessly because there's a chance that Narcan will save the addict's life.
That's not true.
That is true.
So we would call nine-one-one and then administer the Narcan. That's the process.
Okay.
I called nine-one-one this evening at three-thirty-three PM to ask for help from our Wallingford Police Department. At four-twenty-something, called dispatch again, wondering, "Is help still on the way?" It wasn't until I went down there at five-fifteen PM to ask the person at the counter, "Is dispatch still coming out to Thirty-One Grib Trail? I am scared and I need help." That right there, to me, I don't hold much stock in calling nine-one-one for whatever my issue would be.
No, and I'm just trying to figure out how the Coalition gets in the middle of, I'm not saying the middle, that that's a problem, right? But, you know, there's an overdose at a business, right? Or a, a house, you know, a residence. Natural reaction is to call the police, now, if, or, or Fire, an ambulance. If they call you folks first...
They wouldn't... They wouldn't, it's not part of the package.
No, and I'm just trying to figure out, now you've got 1,600 units of Narcan, right? How, what is the plan?
So, the plan is to do the training, and then we distribute an initial amount of Narcan.
So, is there a, and I didn't see that in the packet, is there some sort of, I mean, I haven't seen any advertisements, come to the Coalition, business owners, to learn about Narcan?
We do advertise it.
Okay, all I said is I haven't seen it, okay?
No.
Okay.
We have done it through our website. We have done it through, we used MailChimp to send out invites. We've had half a dozen, our Facebook is kind of our number one tool.
And on what frequency are you doing the training?
We were doing the trainings once a month up until, I want to say, August of this past year.
Okay, so that was four months ago.
Not enough funding to pay us to be there after hours to continue these, to be available. It's been a struggle.
Okay. Have you had Narcan, because I think you said that you give the businesses kits?
Yes.
When they leave, right?
Yes.
Have you had the Narcan to be able to do that?
Yes.
Currently, I think we only have about four doses left.
We have four left. Out of, I want to say we had two cases of it that we were able to get from the Health Department. They collaborated with us for the initial donation or acquiring, procuring of Narcan.
I mean, I'm still, I'm wrestling with the procedure here, right? So it's, that's where I keep on ending up. Is it fair, you know? But the categoric statement that people don't do drugs because there's Narcan, it's just not true. Anyway. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Zandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to follow up on the earlier comments about our procedure up here. And I want to start with Counselor Tada. It's, and I'm being serious. It's very commendable of any one of us up here to be on council for a period of four years and not miss a meeting. I don't think anybody else up here has been able to do that. I know I haven't. And I'm pretty sure everybody else has missed a meeting at one point or the other. Generally speaking, most of us that miss it is generally due to a work obligation. Even though this is just a Tuesday night ritual every other Tuesday, basically, second and fourth, and then ordinance meetings when we have them, the work is always there. We're always answering emails, we're answering phone calls, and we're always busy. Votes get missed. I'll go back to the last one that I can recall, and I missed that meeting too. That was the Fair Rent Commission. I think that also passed, passed, four to three, but we need five votes to move something. There were two or three counselors out that evening. We brought it back, mainly because it needed to get passed, whether we changed it up or not. That was something that needed to get passed. Here's another incident where we're dealing with this very same thing again, and another time that work had me travel. I've traveled exactly twice this year for work, and it was both of those things. And this grant also was voted for to pass, but we need five to take in action. It's not just ARPA issues that have been brought back. I use the example already of the Fair Rent Commission. I'm gonna go farther back for one more. Simpson Court parking and spending the taxpayer dollars on it was passed a long time ago by the council that was sitting at the time. Then, the voters overturned it with a referendum. It was brought back years later, different change, that's the difference. There was changes to what was being proposed. But in the spirit of that defeat, it was brought back up again, it was passed again at a time when COVID had just kind of settled out, wasn't completely gone, but we had come off the other side of it, and it was just no way that people were gonna be able to get back out there and petition this thing all over again. So it passed, and it stayed passed, and the tax dollars got spent. I only bring those examples up because I don't want people to feel like this is an exception thing. It is an exception. We don't do this a lot up here, but it has been done in the past. There is precedent for it. And I think it's important to understand when we have a situation where something was a majority vote but not passing because of our rules, that we take another opportunity when we can get a full body up here. I think that's justified to the organization, whether it's this situation, the Fair Rent Commission, or anything else for that matter. So I appreciate the opportunity that I'll get a chance to vote on something that I feel is important to vote on, and I didn't have to jeopardize my work by saying, gee, if something that I've got a concern might not pass if I don't show up, I'm not gonna travel for my full-time job, which takes care of, you know, my home and my family. So it's difficult enough to get people to serve. We need to allow for that flexibility. If I wasn't at a customer meeting at the evening hours when the council was running, I would have phoned in. I've done that before. But I was out. I was at work at the time. And I'm sure other people have had that same situation. So I feel that it's important, when it's a critical issue, to have it be brought back when the full council's available, and I appreciate the ability to do so. Thank you.
Counselor Allenson?
Hi. So I said most of my opinion on this last time, so I'm not gonna rehash that, but I really feel that it's necessary to say, that it's not the opinion of the entire council, and I would say, I would hazard to say that at least several of us don't believe that Narcan is a free pass to do drugs. That's a despicable thing to say out loud. So here we go. Maybe, you know, it's nice for us to think that we can assume from a perspective of a person who has never had a chemical dependency or a mental health issue, telling them that they want to do drugs and they want to feel better in some sort of way, that they'll just, that that mental health problem is telling them, oh yeah, no, there's Narcan, don't worry about it. Because that's not a thing. So there is no difference between what kids are being taught now and what we were taught in the past. Kids are still being taught not to do drugs. The difference is that we are dealing, as world citizens, with a mental health crisis that is at a recognized all-time high between drug use and suicides. Anybody who looks at the numbers, whether you unintentionally or intentionally took your own life by drug use or another means, it is a definitive statistic that tells you that we need to do something. And when we can do something and we know that there's a tool that could help us, we should. My suggestion to you would be maybe phase your purchasing of the Narcan if you're approved. Maybe phase your purchasing of the Narcan at the beginning and at the end of when your expenditure period is, so that you have a little bit of extra time on that expiry, if you're approved. I do also want to say, as a council, it's our responsibility to vote about what we are doing, how we're spending money. And it is not our job to make broad statements about what we feel is the responsibility level of the program. If you don't like it, don't vote for it. And that actually covers everything. Sorry, I was very passionate there, and I said my whole end statement at the beginning, and so here we go. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you. I'll try and cover a couple of the different things. Process not being fair. Nobody loved the ARPA application process. Some of us wanted it done 18 months ago. It took an additional six months, about a year ago now, before applications were coming in and due. That is definitely in part because of all the politics that were involved up here. The people that wanted to do it, the people that didn't want to do it, people pulling back, monkey riches all along the way. It was a very difficult process for everybody, and I think we all agree that we're just trying to do the best that we can and try and get this money out. We had money allocated in different buckets, some for government, some for business, some for nonprofits. We've gone back to the government bucket a couple times. I think we're actually outside of the government bucket. So if we're gonna talk about processes being different or unfair, that whole thing has been shaken up. The vote coming back, Counselor Tada, you can definitely bring back that ATV, I believe there is at least one ATV already purchased. But I think what's different here as well is that when votes have come back that haven't seen a significant or any change, there is an expected different outcome because of a change in conditions, which in this case there were two additional counselors. The Fair Rent Commission didn't pass because there weren't enough people here, same situation. It actually went back to ordinance, and then no changes came from it. After another round of all these possible discussions, nothing came of it. The only reason it passed again, because none of the votes changed, were that more people were present. And that was the council trying to fulfill an obligation to the state to follow the law. Getting back to the process, the application process, and what's fair, what's not fair. Your $17,000 award was under the recovery grant, I believe, right? You were allowed to apply for funds for recovery purposes and funds for a program. The program did not initially pass, and then it did after the deviation was applied. There were six scores from the Coalition, from the committee. 90, 80, 80, 61, 55, and 15. Removing the 15, it passes. If the 15 was 45, 15 points below, 10 points below the other score, still would have passed. Therein lies the whole existence of the need because most of the council, by majority vote, agreed that the system created by the committee was being gamed. And in this case, that 15 torpedoed the program. Now, assuming with the 15, without the 15, with the deviation, whatever it is, program passes, application's accepted. We approved a restaurant last meeting to adjust the use of its ARPA grant incrementally for a similar or like purpose, but they had a different need come up that did not exist when they filed the application, just as your needs and abilities with the team that you have now did not exist a year ago as well. I think the spirit of what we're trying to do up here is to help these organizations and these businesses keep moving forward, keep climbing out. And it was initially approved. You're asking for an adjustment, and I'm all in favor of that. Thank you for keeping the Coalition afloat during everything. You know, you hear things in the background and as the community goes on, and it's nice to have a face with all that happened. I've seen you around, I just didn't know who you were. But it's organizations like this, just trying to do the best that they can to do something. The next overdose death, are we gonna sit up here and say and wonder if the $17,000 could have saved that one life, even if all the other doses? What if 1,599 doses don't get used? They all expire, or they're all wasted. But what if one works? I think that's good enough for me. Thank you.
Counselor Allenson?
I just had one more thing to add because I finally got my thoughts back, and that would be to Counselor Tada, I would definitely support you bringing back the item on fire, and maybe we include the chiefs because we can ask them, like, what's the need and all of that. And I would actually ask that of any ARPA funds that we allocated to town projects that, you know, just getting a general status on them. So thank you for bringing that up.
Counselor Maroon?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, certainly I believe in everything that you do, and I don't want, you know, the drugs are a scourge in our society right now. I think talking about drugs and Narcan and all that is a bit of a distraction from what the issue is. Because we haven't really judged any other program on the merits of the program, right? We looked at a lot of applications for a lot of different topics. We didn't, you know, say to businesses, your application isn't meritorious enough to get the award. We kind of focused on some other particulars. So I just want you to understand that my no vote is not gonna be because I don't think your program has merit. It's just because I think that we have, we've reached a point now where we have no process. And I realize that this is an issue about which the mayor is very passionate, and I appreciate his wanting to push this forward, but I don't, but his passion is not the process that we had set forth when we went down this road, which we continually make adjustments to, to get, you know, programs that we like into this process. And so I think if we had known at the beginning what the outcome was gonna be at the end, perhaps other applicants would have approached this process differently. So again, not a judgment or indictment of the program, because I think you do great work, but it is an indictment of the process, which I think has been a hot mess from the beginning. I mean, you could even look at how it ended up at the last meeting, because knowing the players involved, one would sit here and say, it's not gonna pass because you don't have the votes. So why go through that exercise at the last meeting and then bring it up tonight with all the lobbying from the administration and so forth to vote on it again when we know it's gonna pass again tonight? So it's just, this process leaves me a little bit puzzled. So, you know, the restaurant that we passed last week was a capital improvement to a capital improvement. This is something, this is a program that wasn't imagined at the time of the application process but was imagined later. And if you said to a group of people, can you come up with a way to spend $50,000 government dollars, I'm pretty confident that most people could. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishbein?
So, a couple of years ago in the legislature, we had a, there was a TIF over whether or not a police officer, after they had administered Narcan, could take the person into custody and bring them to the hospital. Half the legislature said, well, that's false imprisonment. And there half said, well, that's the best thing for the person. We were getting, I specifically remember, there was a police officer from Waterbury who came to our public hearing. They Narcaned somebody early in the evening, and the same night, ended up Narcaning them again. They asked them why. They did it because they could come back. The categoric statement, and I'm not saying that people do drugs because there's Narcan. There are people out there that do look at it as a life-saving instrument, and, you know, that's part of the battle that we have. You know, I'm happy that Counselor Laffin brought up the 15, because I was the 15 on the program, not on the aid application. And at the meeting of the ARPA Review Committee, and I brought this up in the last meeting, but, you know, now we're back to the 15. I pointed out that the four corners of the application could not be dealt with by this entity under their present mission, and they didn't have the acumen. And I scored accordingly. And the reason why we have a totally new application is ultimately that was the determination. With every scoring that I did, I tried to take politics out of the process. But as Counselor Laffin noted, you know, somebody scored that application that could not be achieved at a 90. So when one looks at the process and the manipulation of the process, you have to look at both ends. So at the end of the day, I think what I brought up at the meeting came true, and that's the reason why we're here. But once again, it's all about process. So, you know, I don't know what happens with the other applicants that had come to the town or reached out to us and said, we're too late, can we put in an application? What do we say to them? What is this body gonna say to them going forward? I fear for, because the process is not even a process anymore. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes? Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you. We also, the point that I didn't make earlier was that we as a council also always believed or operated, most of us, I think, that at the end, the council had the final say and could re-review or do what it wanted with the remaining funds and applications and everything anyway. So even if we don't want to attach this to a previous program that was approved, and we want to allocate this money for a new program, we are within that right, separate and above and beyond, just as we have been modifying our government side spending all along. So again, the council has always been the final say in this review process. And the commission was never meant to be the end all. It was meant to streamline and basically move the easy ones along and lighten the load, the review load of the council. That's it. Thank you.
Questions, comments from the public? Representative Mischinsky?
Thank you. I'm the liaison between the coalition and the legislature. And we provide information for the coalition. And they act on it, and they come and testify at the right time of year. And I'm here to support them in their request for another vote. We had, last year we had 2,000, in 2022, we had 1,467 Connecticut residents dying from overdose or substance abuse. Most of that was fentanyl deaths. And in Wallingford, we had 17 deaths. Again, heavy fentanyl representation here. So, you know, we're a small town and we love it, but we have our own share of these fentanyl deaths. And this organization works on the prevention and the education that makes these deaths less likely in the future. They have been working all along with Wallingford Youth and Social Services, who supervises what they do. And they've been basically the outreach of youth and social services for several years. Well, since they were founded, really. There is a link between mental health and substance abuse. The mental health, ill health drives substance abuser to treat themselves with substance abuse. And I was at the NAMI meeting last night, the mental health meeting, and this question came up about working on prevention using mental health. And that is a big part of what the coalition does. They have family strengthening nights where they teach people how to reduce stress in the household and in the family and teach it, teach kids how to manage stress in a more healthy way, poetry or sports or whatever, to reduce the stress on them, which causes them to reach out and look for substance abuse. So the original application came in from Ken Welch, the original director. And when it got to the mayor's office, the mayor asked for changes in the application to focus on the prevention and not on early childhood. And so the new executive director that Raj Doring and I had recruited for this job, she came in after the application was submitted. And at the mayor's request, she rewrote the application. So now it's all about prevention. It's aimed at teens, it's aimed at adults, businesses, parents. And Diane would like to go ahead with the new proposal. But she unfortunately is caught in the middle because she was trying to make the executive branch happy. And that bothered some on the council. So she's caught in the middle in this situation because she wasn't here yet and came in midway. So I just want to summarize that substance abuse weakens our population in Wallingford. You know, 17 deaths is too high. We have to keep working to get that number down. Prevention programs like what they are suggesting strengthens our population and strengthens our town. Workers can go back to work. Parents don't have to spend their time stressed out over what's happening to their teenager. And the programs will be measured. I've, I'm on their board and I remind them of this, that they have to measure the before and after on the programs. And hopefully, we can come back and show you that the programs were effective in reducing mental health issues and deaths. I hope we can show that. But this is the prevention group that Youth and Social Services works with. And they're on the front lines. They're ready to do the work for you. Ken was, had another job and he did his work in his spare time. Diane and her staff are able to do this during the day. And they are able to serve all these different groups in the community during the day as we would want them to do. Not just in their spare time on the weekend, but every day they can do this if we grant them the application money. So I hope we will. And I hope you will help them save lives in Wallingford. I also want to, just on a different note, I want to congratulate the counselors who were reelected. And I want to thank counselors Zandry for being a good public servant all these years. And Mayor Dickinson, I want to thank you for being such a gentleman and easy to work with. Thank you.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I wrote some notes because it was tough. You guys were all over the place. But on here, you know, this has been a flawed process. You guys have changed the rules all along. This isn't the first application that's changed or passed because there was some change, something in it. You have applications that didn't meet your criteria that you still passed. So why, I mean, this is a, you, I remember at one meeting not too long ago, you had an application, which was a large application, that some of the things that were said, if I remember correctly, were because they do good for the community. It wasn't a criteria for this. And this was an application that saves actual lives. Counselor Fishbein was talking about Narcan. There are households in Wallingford that have Narcan in their house because their teenage children, male and female, are narcotic users. And the parents know it. And they're afraid that the kids are going to die because they can't rely on, and nothing against the police or fire department, they can only get there so fast. Moments, minutes, seconds count. But Narcan's in the house. This is the group that provides that training to these people. This is where they go for their Narcan. And they have it. It does expire, as they said, as most medicines do. And so this needs to be taken into account for. 17 deaths, way too many, but that's not all that's happened in town. Narcan saves lives. And so how many lives have been saved with that Narcan that's out there? That they're doing the training for, that other groups do training for? I'm not saying just them. I know it's Midstate Hospital does Narcan training. Plenty of places do Narcan. Rushford and all those type of places do Narcan training. But there's just one cog in the wheel that saves lives. And Representative Mischinsky was just saying that if the mayor was the one who would like to change in the plan, well, I mean, this is a better, if this is a better outcome for the community as a whole, then certain things happen. Applications, as Counselor Fishbein will know, we saw certain applications that came in on the, on the committee. And some of those applications were sent back and then came back to us because they were wrong or things had to be changed. What's the difference here? I mean, I don't, I don't see, I've seen it's going to pass tonight and I hopefully. So it's going to, but I, people have to realize that Narcan's out there. It saves lives. It needs to be in people's households because it came across that it's not out there for, you know, it's not in people's houses. This is what they do. They put it in businesses. You have a large factory in town here, unfortunately. And there's hundreds of people that work there. Unfortunately, there's probably a narcotics user there. And it doesn't discriminate against age. You can be a 50-year-old that's using heroin. You can be a 20-year-old, you can be a 15-year-old. So it doesn't, you know, we don't think of older people using drugs, but they do. It's just the way of the world. And so I would hope you pass it. And, you know, again, I was just going to say that hopefully next year, this group comes to you for a larger sum of money. That you've heard what they do, the new director, Natalie here, that hopefully you will fund them. And then they can do these things and really be a big asset to the community, which they already are, but a bigger asset. Thank you.
Ms. Davis, then Mr. Reynolds?
Ms. Davis, 31, who had a dead drive. I'm going to speak from a personal standpoint here, not from business. I've had three deaths in my family within the last five years due to addiction. And these three deaths did not have this available to them. So I'm certain that each one of you up there in your council have family who has experienced some death of some sort with addiction. This is a needed, and I don't want to, I feel like I'm just repeating. This is definitely a needed situation and definitely needed agency. It saddens me to think that people would use Narcan as one of the expecting things to live. Take the drug and then I get Narcan and I'll live. That to me just doesn't make any sense. But if there are people out there that think that way, then we need to re-educate those people as well. So I'm taking it on a personal level. I support this from Wallingford Center, Inc., only because they are my neighbor, but they also do great work and need to have this visibility out in the community. Again, it's a much needed thing. They were in the schools before, they're back in the schools again. And I think more education with the school system is what's needed, as well as the community. But Mr. Gross is right. It doesn't make a difference what age it is. Addiction is addiction. So having this available is a benefit to the community. Thank you.
Jesse, excuse me, Jesse Reynolds, Old Arm Road. I guess the question, so going back to the ARPA process, I remember the application. And I actually think that this is probably a more appropriate use of the funds, given what the directive of what the program was designed to do. We knew that COVID impacted mental health. We also knew that people who were struggling with addiction had issues that were then elevated by COVID and so forth. And so having a program that would then put Narcan in places to, you know, this is all within the realm of what it could have done had we taken an up-down vote of passing scores. It still wouldn't have passed, which is one of the things that I had suggested we do, but we didn't do that. But however, that being said, I agree with Counselor Laffin. I think we're kind of out of the barn here. I think whatever you want to do with the money at this point, you can. And if there's enough of you that want to spend it, you should. My bigger concern echoing Mr. Gross as well as Ms. Davis is sort of the sustainability about this. Because like when you deal with sort of like grants that you get from the federal government, for example, one of the things you have to do is demonstrate that you can kind of recover the cost and then build it into your regular business moving forward. And so what I would hope if this moves forward and then it's evaluated, as Representative Mischinsky mentioned, is that if this does work, that this then gets built into the actual budget. So this is something that people don't have to come and ask for every year, but this is something that's actually provided as a service. And so if all of that comes out of this, then I think it's a good thing. But in general, you know, I, that's my biggest concern is the sustainability. Not only does the medication have a shelf life that is limited and therefore then really shouldn't be used at that point, but also you only have a limited amount and then there is no more money. You know, there won't be another ARPA, 50 grand. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council. Counselor Fishbein, you wanted to say something else?
Yeah, just briefly. I mean, I guess part of the frustration here is we hear that Narcan is a prevention tool. But the prevention is, it's prevention of death. Years ago, you tried to prevent one from ingesting a substance for the first time. That was where the wall was, right? So now the wall has moved. And that's the frustrating aspect of this. The other thing is, you know, when, before the, well, when the coalition was created, Craig Turner was at Youth and Social Services. I know John Leturnal was at the end. We used to talk about duplication of services. And one of the things that I brought up at the last meeting was my disappointment in not having a drug and alcohol counselor through the coalition. And I did have the opportunity since the last meeting to talk to Mandy Miranda. And I was happy to learn that that office does now have somebody in that role. But then it begs the question, why isn't that individual doing, you know, this training outreach to businesses? I know it's on a part-time basis, but, you know, I think that's something that should be looked at, the duplication of services, you know, for the betterment of everyone. And as Representative Mischinsky said, to prevent death. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, seeing no other hands, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
For the second time, yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
No.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Cervone?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, on to, you're welcome. On to item eight. Get a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve an ARPA allocation of funds in the amount of $25,000 for LaScara Restaurants.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mayor Attorney Farrell, what do we have?
I know that Attorney Small was involved in recommending the rejection of this. And I just wanted to share that in my private practice, I've never represented LaScara or anybody in it. But I did, was on the other side of a lawsuit in LaScara. While LaScara may produce great food, paperwork was not their forte. LaScara is a good restaurant. I don't eat there. I've eaten there a couple of times. But people in Yalesville love it. It's part of the business community up there. And I've always looked at ARPA as it's meant to keep the commercial, charitable and municipal landscape as close to the same as it was before the pandemic. So if that's part of what you agree with, then I, I think that it would be good to extend the courtesy to them. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Counselor Allenson?
So just for the record, the, because I want to just comment on why this is coming up. The application previously was approved because this isn't our backup, but it's not necessarily on the record. So people who are sitting in the audience or watching. So there was a tax error, or not error, but a tax problem oversight on the part of the restaurant. It was corrected immediately upon being notified of it. And
That's my understanding.
Yes, and that's why it's before us today. So it's essentially, when we reached out to them and told them that they had a tax issue, they went about correcting it immediately. So now it's coming back before us because we took no action on it before. So I just wanted to make that clear as far as the public is concerned. Because these, these minutes and these agendas can be quite long. And not everybody reads all of them. So thank you very much, Attorney Farrell, for your summary. I just wanted to make sure I added that to the information.
Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein?
Just to add to that, just to, you know, we had other applications that had tax issues. But it was like, they were in arrears for, I think it was a couple of years. And I think that one application we did end up rejecting. My understanding based upon the backup is that at the time of application, they were they were current. But by the time the application got reviewed, they got into arrears. So it was that lapse of time. Correct?
My understanding is that they had been in arrears and were on a payment plan. That's my understanding. And they were current on the payment.
Okay. Yeah, but it was just that, that small amount of time that they were not in compliance. So, okay. With that, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see no other hands on the council. Mayor? Mr. Chairman, I believe representatives of La Scar are here. If you would want to hear it from them. I'm seeing a, no. Would you like to speak? Yep, if you could come up to the microphone and just identify yourself for the record, please. Yes.
My name is Jenny Kontothanasses and I'm the owner of La Scar Restaurant, 295 Parker Farms Road. I would just like to thank you for the time tonight. At the time of the application, we thought we were actually okay. And it took a while for everything to be straightened out. Like, you know, it's been a real struggle every single day, just like all small businesses in the area. The community has been amazing. We've had a lot of support. But it is a fight. And any help, anything would be truly, truly appreciated. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands from the public, I come back to the council. Counselor Fishbein, I saw your hand.
I just, when I heard there was a representative from La Scar, I was expecting Johnny Depp and his Pirates of Penzance or something. One of his, Maria, I know. So if anybody's on Instagram sees Maria, it's all about Johnny Depp. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tata?
Abstain.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandri?
Yes.
Cervone?
Yes, the motion passes. With that, can I get a motion to go into executive session for item number nine?
I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 1-225F and Section 12006B regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to the PFAS class actions against 3M and DuPonts.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Please clear the chambers.
Call the meeting back to order. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the meeting back in public session. And can I get a motion on number 10 please?
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize the general manager of the water division to execute all documents necessary to opt out of the PFAS class action suit settlement with 3M and DuPont.
Second.
Uh, moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. There being no other business on our agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The rest of you can stay. The rest of you can stay.